Look at everybody. A little house today.
Ready, Patty?
All right, welcome. It is great to see a good crowd today for our board meeting for June 30th. And it is Dr. Anderson's last board meeting, so we're just gonna do this like a big bang. We'll call the meeting to order and I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
If you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any citizens' comments? All right, it looks like so we do have a few people in the crowd, so while I don't know who some of the new faces are, except for I do see one I know. But I'm gonna let somebody, after they've already probably been told they're gonna make the introduction, so Allison probably will.
I would like to start. Sure. I'd like to introduce Dina Barstich. She is our new coordinator for the New Behavioral Health Science Program.
Welcome.
You don't want to tell them a little bit about yourself?
Well, I know a few of you, but for those of you who don't know, I came from Sedo High School District. I had been there for almost 15 years. I started out coordinating the social work program for the district. And when I left to come to State Fair, I had been at Skyland Elementary for about six years. So I'm anxious. This has always been something that I've been very interested in, higher education. So I'm very excited about this program. And been here for about two weeks. And I'm not completely overwhelmed yet, but I'm learning a lot, so I'm really excited.
You're welcome. I think we have some folks in the back.
Sure.
I would like to introduce Krista Wilson. She's our new financial aid specialist. She comes from us with a mortgage finance world. So she's from outside of higher ed. She's been with us for about a month now, going into her first month. But she is a alum of State Fair and she's currently taking classes as well, so we're happy to have her on board.
Welcome.
I'm privileged to introduce Steve Gardner. He's the director of our Whiteman Air Force Base. And he's has a career in the Air Force. He was chief master sergeant. And he has also served as director of different campuses in the Air Force. And so he comes with a wealth of experience. He was stationed at Whiteman Air Force Base, knows the cricks and crannies. Well connected and we're privileged to have him.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I don't think so. We have some folks that will introduce themselves. Amanda and Ray is part of.
Okay.
I don't know, did Dr. Anderson, did you mention that folks that couldn't be here?
Oh, sure. So we do have a new navigator at Lake of the Ozarks named Amy King. So she wasn't able to be here today. And then we also have the navigator Clinton, and that is Sarah Goff. So those were two that weren't able to come. Oh, and I'm sorry, our SDC, the Lake of the Ozarks SDC, Paige Jones.
All right. Well, welcome. And you new employees are welcome to leave. You don't, you're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to leave. And thank you for coming here. Come back and see us anytime.
Thank you.
And I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for our May 26, 2022 board meeting that were published and we received.
Motion to approve.
If you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so we're ready for the warrant for the May 2022.
Thank you. During the month of May, we dispersed in funds $3,946,551. About $2,416,000 payable. There were no payments made to prosper the old construction. We'll see something next month, but we're not having that be in the month of May. We had payroll of $8,801, income of payroll taxes, all that payroll, $1,969.7. Initially, $3,783.3, utilities, $8,393.9. All paid charge. So that is your, your, just first month of funds for the month of May.
All right, and confirmed by Justin Hubs as our treasurer. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve that report?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, Keith, stay there because we wanna know about the fiscal year 2023 budget.
So we did review the 2023 budget and work session with you. So it is recommended that the board trustees approve the fiscal year 2023 budget as presented. Running budget authority of $53,602,534. This budget includes a compensation increase and tuition increases as previously approved. It assumes a 3% enrollment decrease for FY '23.
Thank you for that extensive report that you gave in our work session. And I know that, you know, you and your team and many others have, play a large role, but appreciate that to the depth of that report. So I will entertain a motion for the approval of the budget for 2023. If you have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. All right. So Keith, the state of Missouri, FY 2023 non-recurring appropriations.
So in addition to the budget you just approved, there are two other budget revenue sources I'd like you to approve. These are non-recurring and are budgeted separately for that purpose. So it's recommended the board trustees approving sections 6772, non-recurring state of Missouri FY 2023 appropriations to State Fair Community College. These are in addition to the funds that we previously approved in the SFCC fiscal year 2023 budget just prior. These non-recurring allocations are SFCC share of the $10 million one-time allocation to community colleges, which is an amount of $655,612. And the SFCC carryover of unspent fiscal year '22 deferred maintenance funds of $700,928. The projects and purchases utilizing these revenue sources will be reviewed or approved of the board for being spent.
And again, we discussed that in our work session. So I will entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
Second, if you have a second?
Sorry, Richard.
All of us, and in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
You can go ahead and second.
All right, and so now to the, that's the area career center construction reimbursement.
In the meeting prior, as we mentioned, that there were additional funds remaining from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the construction of new career centers. We had received $500,000 previously. There were funds remaining in that, in that grant. We applied for them and we did receive them earlier this week. So I guess I might need your approval to, without reading through the whole thing, I'll go to the part that, that matters. But previously, we had applied or were awarded $500,000 on reimbursement for the CTC portion of the Allen Howard Workforce Innovation Center. These additional reimbursement funds that I'm asking for approvals, except today, additional funds of another $500,000 from the area career center construction fund have been available and have been received. So it's recommended the board alone, of course, he's authorized the president to accept those additional $500,000 in funds for the CTC portion of the Allen Howard Workforce Innovation Center.
Sid, I'm always glad to move to some money.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, accounts receivable write-off. Keith?
Part of a may fiscal process or account receivable write-offs that occur this year, so it's recommended that the board trustees authorize the vice president of finance administration to write off $693,522.26 as uncollected balances for this year 2022.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
If you have a second?
I'll second. Keith, this is a, this is an accounting write-off as uncollectible, but it's not a legal write-off. All right. The debt remains outstanding. Yes, but just for accounting purposes, we have to take it off our balance.
We are required, we are required to after a year to remove it so that we're not improperly, you know, maybe, yes.
Overstate our assets.
But yes, it still remains in collections.
And we receive collections until going to.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, so we are ready for resolution approving a purchase. Dr. Anderson?
All right. So as you know, we've been, had the opportunity to have an option to purchase 200 acres adjacent to the college current property that is farmland. And that option was legally filed, but now you're going to be exercising your option to purchase in open session. We are asking you, so there's a very long whereas resolution. So basically, I'm gonna read parts of this. It's whereas the Board of Trustees of the Community College District of Mid-Missouri, operating and known as State Fair Community College, has previously entered into an option agreement back in March with the state of Missouri and Roberta Lee Smith, a single person, and Laura M. Powell and Ricky Powell, wife and husband collectively. These are daughters of. And for the purchase of certain property by the college and the state as co-buyers and whereby we have to exercise that option by August 1. And we have been going back and forth between our attorney and the state attorneys. And whereas the colleges' portion of the purchase price for the option property will be $1 million or basically it's $10,000 per acre. And it's to be funded by college reserves. And whereas the board has determined it's necessary and advantageous and desirable for the uses and purposes of the college to proceed with the steps necessary to purchase the property. Now therefore be resolved that, and there's a number of preamble here, and ultimately that you are agreeing to purchase this property and using our reserves to do so. I can read any other parts if you, so geez. All right, it has been something that we have discussed for quite some time and appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I know legal has certainly been involved. I would just also mention that this opportunity came about when the governor and the Missouri Ag Department of Ag has $2 million in their budget to support a $1 million match for State Fair Community College and a $1 million match for the Missouri State Fair Commission. And so this would conclude our action of agreeing to purchase this property. The formality of exchanging the money and that will happen sometime in the next month or so.
I think from the meeting, the transaction involves land adjacent to and immediately west of current campus property of the 400-acre tract we're dividing between, between State Fair, Community College. It's sent basically the northern half of the property. The State Fair Commission is going to purchase the southern half of the property.
It has been surveyed by the state of Missouri and equally divided that property.
50% of the, of the cost is being covered by appropriation from the state of Missouri that we're anticipating using reserve funds, that we have a policy setting, setting a reserve of cash, a cash reserve for liquidity purposes of 15% to 30% of expenditures, but, but taking the hundred, taking the million dollars out, we will still be with, be above our minimum policy with regard to liquidity of accounts. And we're just exchanging a liquid asset for a fixed asset as we purchase the property. And we're acquiring a fixed asset in a double the value of the amount of college assets that we're, reserves that we're, we're using for the purchase. So it's a financially, expansion-wise, with respect to future programming or whatever would be decided that, once this land is available, if it would be purchased by someone else, we wouldn't never have this opportunity again. So it's something that has been discussed in closed session. And I think it's, as we come out publicly, it's, it was a decision that was apparent, was definitely in the best interest of State Fair, that do we do so? And I would make the motion to for the resolution as presented.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Yeah, our sincere, you know, appreciation to the land daughters for, you know, for seeing the kind of this is probably a dream that they realize with, you know, the family and how we began to take it from the college and then now to be able to expand. Certainly, you know, our, just our sincere appreciation to them for letting us have that option to purchase.
Absolutely.
I think, oh, but.
We've articulated that we have made for our ag program, which is a really strong program, that they can make use of this land in many different ways and increase capacity for training of students in business and industry that will be utilized in this.
Absolutely, and I think also I thank you to our legislators that have gone to bat for us at the state level. Representative Paul, Representative Black, for sure. I know we're, we're key contributors. We're branded for agriculture, I think that is very key to see the need that we have here and the need Missouri State Fair has. So make sure we say our congratulations and thank you to the legislators as well that have worked very hard on this as well.
All right, so Keith, you wanna tell us again about those matching funds to purchase?
Now that you've approved the resolution, look forward. Recommended that the board of trustees now authorized use of, in this case, about more than $1,250,000 for asking to up to that amount from the State Fair Community College reserve funds for the purchase of approximately 200 acres of land to the west of and adjacent to the current SFCC property boundary. These funds we use as matching funds, funds appropriated by the General Assembly of the state of Missouri in the FY '23 budget for the purchase of property. State Fair Community College will work jointly with the Missouri State Fair Commission to purchase. Funds will be used for the actual purpose of the property, the matching funds, as well as other costs, which we use utilizing only SFCC funds related to the purchase. For the surveys, inspections, the environmental surveys, if there's our title insurance, any other costs related to the purchase. Motion to approve?
If you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, so National Science Foundation Grant.
So I'm gonna have, now I can have my guest speakers, you will see that, but Amanda, can you tell us about the award you received? And what would be doing with it? Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Amanda Steckline. I am the division chair for business and technology, so I teach some business classes here and help with Division V stuff. So, did you guys get this ahead of time?
They.
No, okay. Will they get it to take with them?
Not now, we can do it in another, we can do it.
Okay, okay. So I do have just a packet for you that you can take and review so that I don't have to go through all of it now. But we basically received $571,769 for a grant to increase educational pathways as a technician career. So this is our second NSF grant. Pat Gilman and Brenda Bryan wrote one back in 2012, right when I started. And they both left the college the last year of the grant and I inherited it in my role over in admissions at the time. So I finished that grant out in 2016. And I remember them telling us, you know, once you have a grant, you can, you can usually get another one if you try. So we waited for some opportunities to come up and we tried again. They now have a mentorship program, so we were able to apply and get accepted into that. So we, Daniel So, myself and Sean Kreip went through a two-day workshop and they kind of helped us get what we needed to start writing the grant again. So we did that back in June, submitted it in October, and we were officially awarded, I think, on the 15th of June. So there's four major goals within the grant. The first one is to enhance certificates and degrees within advanced manufacturing technician careers. So basically, we have two faculty that are on that grant. Ray Simmons is one of them and Justin Wright. And then Daniel is co-PI and then I'm the PI for the grant, the principal investigator is what that refers to. So we will be looking over all of our current degrees and seeing where we can enhance those with certifications, whether it be through NC3 or through equipment manufacturers, getting input from our Advanced Manufacturing Center of Excellence Advisory Committee. So we meet with them quarterly. They will give us input throughout this entire grant. It's a three-year grant. So that's one of our main goals is to make sure we have our certificates and degrees, you know, with as many opportunities for industry-recognized certifications as possible. Our second one is to engage secondary students in activities to raise awareness of technician career opportunities. That is kind of our major one that we're gonna get started on right now. And part of that is building what industry calls a fab lab. We're calling it our collaborate lab. And so we have partnered with Palmer-Hamilton. They are an NC3 partner and they're also, they have a whole division dedicated to developing fab labs across the nation, K-12 and on the post-secondary side. So they're experts in that field. They've helped us design it. They've came in already, looked at the classrooms, spec'd everything out, designed it, gave us kind of a rough drawing of what it looked like. And then, of course, all of the equipment going in there will have NC3 certifications attached to it. So the benefit of that, again, is that our students can test and get certified at no cost. So 3D printers, laser cutters, desktop CNC machines, virtual welders, mechatronics kits for robotics, all of those will be in that one room. And they're all very basic. Get your hands on the technology and start using it right away. So we've got lots of opportunities within that lab to reach out to community. People get workshops going in there. I know a lot of the community's been disappointed lately that we haven't had our kids' college offerings like we have in the past. So we'll be collaborating with the learning force to bring a lot of that back within the fab lab. But we'll kind of have a kids' college thing going year-round. So, so that's the big part of that goal. The next one is to build capacity for offering dual credit, dual enrollment courses by training high school teachers. So we have partnered with six local high schools who sent us letters of intent to participate in this grant with us. And we will be providing them 3D printers, CNC equipment, and then the mechatronics kits as well. Those teachers will get certified here on our campus and our labs. And then they'll go out and teach the dual credit courses in their high schools and certify the students on the equipment out in the high schools. So we wanna build a framework so that after the grant, we can get six more schools and six more schools and just push this out throughout our whole service area. So these six is just kind of our starting point to build, build what works, what doesn't work, and best practices around that. And then we're also, because our, our lab with Palmer-Hamilton, you know, they designed it, we will be a training facility for them. So they are gonna be sending teachers around the state of Missouri to do all their STEM training here on our campus and our lab. So our lab will be a state-of-the-art lab, you know, everything will be, we have the numbers, the amount of equipment we need to certify different people and host workshops. So they're already looking at hosting workshops in our lab for teachers around the state.
Can you explain where it's going to be?
Yes, so over in Fielding, right now we have Room 200. It's on the corner when you come into the Fielding Building. And, yeah, I'm not, I'm directionally challenged, so wherever he says. And I'll pass that around just so you have an idea of kind of what that's gonna look like. But the cool thing about that classroom is it's not only really large, it's currently a computer lab, but it has windows. So right now, there's blinds on them. Those will be gone. And anytime people walk in the Fielding Building or walk around to the classes, they'll be able to see right in there and see all the stuff going on in the lab, all the equipment, the classes and everything. So it'll be a really nice feature in that area.
I would just like to say, great compliments to Amanda for working, and Sean and Daniel for working so hard on getting this grant in. And Keith and the finance department had to do a lot of work as well to make sure that financially all of this can be tracked. Some things have changed since we'd had the last one in 12 to 16. So just great compliments, Amanda, you've done an amazing job. And really, it is a big thing to get one because now, you know, getting the next one hopefully will not be quite as challenging.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we won't have to do that unless we wait another five years to apply again, so.
I'd like to add one other thing too, and compliments to the team putting it together, Amanda, for leading it, huge amount of work. But our manufacturing partners say we need to increase the size of the pipeline. We need more people getting trained and getting out and getting jobs. And this is a major project to increase the pipeline, feeding our industrial partners here in our community. So way to go.
Yeah, that is, that's kind of how we framed this grant was the state came in and helped and our foundation helped build the new building. Now we have to get people in that new building. And this is gonna be that stream. So we'll have stuff offerings from elementary all the way up through, you know, college, high school, community.
The board probably wants to know if they can get a special treat.
Yes, we will have a ceremony when we do, you know, when we, when we get it all going. But yeah, there'll be lots, I mean, the sky's the limit with the opportunities that we'll have in there. So I know I'm not even thinking about all of them, but with our partners, Palmer-Hamilton, they'll give us a whole curriculum suite. So we'll have hundreds of thousands of workshops that other schools have done and different things so that we have ideas of what different things to do in there and host in there. And we're gonna go to Gateway here in a couple of weeks and look at their fab lab and how they're running it. So, and we have an awesome logo that our team designed here at State Fair for the collaborate lab. So we're excited about that. Yep, and then there was one more goal on that grant. The last one is the pathways. So we'll have dedicated resources to really building the pathways of here's what you can take in ninth and 10th grade through your dual credit and then going into the career centers for your 11th and 12th and then coming here and finishing up what you need to and then going on if you want to a four-year. So we'll have all those different pathway pieces built in for, for students. So that's the last part of it.
Actually, this is a possibility for us to get additional students, expand our dual credit, expand to the, with the pathways, then laying a groundwork for high school students to choose State Fair as their, for their two-year, two-year program or technical program. Just give and get, and just general, make, make State Fair known to teachers and educators throughout the state of Missouri.
Yeah, and that's huge. And I think there'll be big proponents of us once we get them in there and get them trained and they get to use equipment in their high school. Hopefully, they're gonna be Team State Fair.
How unique is this across Missouri? What, what do you have going to?
So there's a couple of K-12s that have, in, in Missouri that have fab labs. They're pretty basic. Some of the colleges in the state have different, they call them fab lab maker spaces, but they're not with NC3 and Palmer-Hamilton. And so NC3 is our partner to, with the certifications on the technical side. So we have all of like Lincoln Electric and, oh, who else? Train does all of our HVAC certifications. And there's a lot of other industry partners that are well-known. So they do all of our certifications. Pause. Well, yeah, I, there's so many, I'm not thinking of all of them. But, but the advantage of that is that we get to certify our students at no cost. And so having.
Your program with those certifications, which is a huge stuff.
Yes, exactly. So nowhere other across the state can they come to our lab and get the training on those specific machines. So nowhere other across the state can they come to our lab and get the training on those specific machines to. Yes, yeah. OTC is a partner now with NC three, but they are not a leadership school yet. So they have not taken on what we have, the partnership we have with NC three. So they're not in a position, they're the only other school in Missouri, right? That.
The one more community college, North.
Metropolitan. Oh, okay.
We're, we're well ahead of the others.
Can you talk about which high schools or is that going to be released later? No, um, so right now, Tipton, Otterville, Green Ridge, Miftin. No, you're good. There's, there's two other ones. And what we did, just so you have a little background, we sent out back in September an email to Warsaw, this is the fifth one. Look at my poker face. Well, they came in late because when we sent the email last September, they didn't really have a superintendent at that time. So, but they, their now principal got them in once, you know, that all came about. But we emailed the superintendents, we had a conference call, said we have an opportunity to collaborate on this grant. If you're interested in it, join the conference call, I'll explain everything. Because of course it was kind of like, okay, we have to get this going. That was in September, the grant was due in October. So we, those are the schools that attended the conference call and, you know, made the arrangements and gave us commitment letters. The teachers had to write commitment letters that they would go through the professional development. So they're, they're definitely our main partners. But we also have money in the grant for field trips, bus reimbursements. So any school in our service area is going to benefit from this. But those are going to be the ones that we're actually going to use to create the framework for dual credit and certification out of the high schools. I have a K-12 background professionally earlier and this is amazing. Yeah, we're excited, I'm so excited, we're excited, yeah.
Now I went K-2, let's hold it in myself. Why is the big dog? Did I miss the study 200 or are they not eligible or are they just?
No, they're eligible. They, so they really have a pretty robust program already. So they're, at any point that they want to align with like NC three and do some of that, they already have the equipment available and some of the classes and stuff. So our model's focused more on the smaller rules that don't have that. Yeah, because as far as, I mean, the purpose isn't necessarily for them to, to, you know, become something at that point. It's just to get interested in their technical careers and get their hands on equipment. So when they go to CTC, that's when they get to use the equipment that our employers are, you know, utilizing at this point. So Savelia has that entry level, get your hands on it, you know, very robust, so, yeah.
Well, I know you all have been working on this for a while because I got to go on a tour with you to Kansas and would see some of those labs, the fab labs they're talking about. So thank you and all of your team for, you know, your dedication, your passion and then vision to have that happen right here.
Yeah, we're excited for sure.
Any more questions? Thank you, Amanda.
Yes, yes.
So much.
And after today, I'm sure we'll be seeing some requests for equipment. I'll make the motion that we.
Keith, do you need to do anything?
I need to read it or can you all go by, should I read it publicly? So I'll read it publicly just so it's, so it's recommended the board trustees approve the acceptance of the National Science Foundation grant award number 2202182 in the amount of $571,799 for developing the magnetic pathways for advanced manufacturing technician work. Once we use, utilize paper personnel and develop the delivery costs. And the award performance period is June 15, 2022, May 31, 2025. Motion approved.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
On a favor, say aye. All right, universal collaborative robots education.
So I'm going to have Ray Simmons come in and talk to you kind of about the three, 13, 14, 15, they're kind of all together. I have to make one change or mimic to each of these. There is, so I have this for, on each of my written for SFC's precision machine program. They're actually for our industrial electrical maintenance program. So when we do these, we will read them as industrial electrical maintenance. But I want Ray to heads up that program to come talk to you in general about what these do and what they're used for and, you know, how we're going to.
Ray, on to seven, there we are. Ray Simmons, I'm the program coordinator and instructor for industrial electrical maintenance program. Collaborative robots are a robot that allows the, an operator to work in unison with the robot. So you see a lot of times where they're out and it's just a robot in a cage. This is actually, I'm working right here next to it, it touches me, it stops. They're becoming more and more prevalent in industry. Going to, they've already started their way into food service, so Chipotle's already started to add some of them. So they're. The curriculum, this here comes with a built curriculum already. They're the number one collaborative robot manufacturer in the world. They're almost completely done with their, becoming an NC three partner. So then we will have that NC three certification, but they already have an industry recognized credential for their robotics program. So our students will be able to learn how to program. And figure out, you know, where they need to install these and how to go about that. They, the package is pretty straightforward. I also including one mobile package so I can go out to the area of schools. So to allow students in school to actually be able to walk up and program this thing because they can certainly make a little short program in five, five minutes. So, you know, high schools, junior high, to show what's, where things are going and get them interested. I'm always asked why we don't have more robotic students from the high school robotics teams coming into our robotics program and it's like night and day difference. Well, this style of program for these will pull some of those students in. Because of the way it's set up. Questions?
I had a question on the bottom of the second page under the additional accessories.
Yes.
In there we hit, we get, we receive five free seats at the Certified UR Core Training at HDC facility. Is that for faculty or is that for students?
Oh, that's for faculty.
Okay, my question is, on top of that, this, how many faculty members do we have in your department that could utilize those?
Well. I have two people in my department now. Another one would be Rochelle, our liaison, she could take this out and do something also. So that's what we're looking at. So it's not limited to the one person that can go out and write this.
So will be able to use. My question is, in the future, I mean, with this training, will they come back to the college and be able to train more of our faculty? Or do we see this where we bring faculty back to this?
With the certification, as you see in there, I don't remember what line item it is on that. But one instructor will have to go out and do a, a paid instructor course to be able to teach the certified class. So in order to be a certified teacher until it becomes NC three, that's how it has to go for them.
We'll be able to use all five seats.
We'll be able to use all five of those seats.
Will we need more, could we use more?
I, I don't foresee that because as far as that goes, that is a setup to, you know, basically know how to take it in, turn it on, program it and allow people to use that. So as far as the certification process, that's not needed for that part of it. So you, you know, yes, they could train more people to do that. Oh, okay, so on the other two items. They are fanning robotic cells or regular, they're, these are industries robots. One is a, an enhanced version of the four that we already have is. For these is they'll help expand our robotics program in the industry wise. This one comes set up to be able to use and teach the sensors that industry is using with these robots now. Vision cameras, RFID readers, barcode scanners and things like that. It comes, also, it will work into where, I'm trying to take our program and we teach robotics and PLC, but we don't teach the integration between the two. That's where I want to take our automation side of this program. Because I get questions about that all the time. I done it when I worked in industry, but I want to integrate it into our program to advance our program. The second set down here on line 15, those are bigger cells. They are, they come 10 by 10 cell with the conveyor. So it teaches us a whole lot more aspects to industry. They all come with their own PLC and HMI, so everything's there to set it up. And they're, this will pull in industry recognized credentials out of both of these from Rockwell. And this will also allow to work into our current program where we're teaching to, because we are the only school in the state of Missouri that can offer that operating fanning certification.
Thank you. I know you traveled as well to Kansas.
So as we go through to see all these halls being paid for by the Moec cells grant. It's just what we're using now to build out, basically, these will be in, these will be in buildings?
These will be in the, once the remodel goes, they will be set up out in the lab area. All our robots will be out there, other than the collaborative, they're small enough, they will be actually being in the classroom.
And this part will be in what's currently precision machine or what was just vacated by precision. So recommend the board approve the sole source purchase of five universal lab robots or cobots and accompany educational program for our industrial electrical maintenance program for 206,939 from HG Automation of Kansas City Mo. All the people further enhance our NC three certification and compliments on fanning robots certification. And funding his Moec cells to grant provide certificates to advanced manufacturing automation. That's number 13. Motion approved.
You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Next one is ask your approval for the sole source purchase of one APT mechatronics trainer featuring a fanning six access industrial robot or industrial electrical maintenance program for 8740. From ADX Educational Systems of Los Indiana. A fanning is our robotic system used by SFCC and ABT is in sort of the power of those in the state of Missouri. Fanning is the mobile cells grant for the Center for Advanced Manufacturing Automation. Motion approved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Lastly, what we talked about is the sole source purchase of three APT manufacturing educational robotic cells, which features the PLC control panel, all the structural support, the abayers you mentioned, supporting the fanning six industrial robot, which is our robot that we teach on here for industrial maintenance program. That costs us 480, 2,009.75 again, ADX, Russ, Rossman, Indiana. And again, funded through the Moec cells grant for our Center for Advanced Manufacturing Automation. Motion approved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Keith, you're still up.
Now we get to the transitioning of, of the transition. To a new president. So we need to, next who will be to, firstly, to authorize new bank signatures for our bank accounts. Well, actually in this also, I'm being adjusted to that, which should have done in the past, but I got passed by and all the code fun stuff. So, recommend the board trustees authorize the addition of Brent Bates as an authorized signature for banking transactions, including checking, payroll, savings, certificates of deposit, other investments, banking deposit boxes for central bank and any other banking investment facility doing business for State Fair Community College. Keith Baycott is currently an authorized agent, will remain. Joanna Anderson is an authorized agent, but will be removed effective July 1, 2022. Further recommended that Justin Huggs be added as treasurer as an authorized signature for all banking investment activities same as the designated role or Brent Bates and myself.
All right, do we hear motion to approve? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed with an aye. Do you feel in the, you're feeling in the air? Well, with our funds, so we say thank you. All right.
So all that is also now the delegation of signature and approval authority. So it's recommended the board trustees authorize Brent Bates president effective July 1, 2022. Authority to execute contracts, financial documents and other official documents necessary for the conduct of the college's business. And does not, that does not conduct of the college's business that does not specifically require board action. Keith Baycott currently has been designated identical authority and will remain. No other person is authorized to execute such documents on behalf of the college. Unless authority to do so has been delegated in writing by the president.
All right, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, Keith. All right, so as per policy, we know that the board of trustees, day and time is set for the fourth Thursday at four o'clock, four o'clock PM. And so with kind of a change of the board, we've looked at to see, you know, what best works for the board. We also, you know, want to take in consideration the staff. We know that, you know, four o'clock was within their work time. But people that are on the board have work schedules that we have to accommodate as well. So we are looking at asking to see, you know, to approve the date and time to meet for the regular monthly meeting as the fourth Thursday, keeping it the same day, but moving it to 5:30 PM moving forward. Entertain a motion to accept that.
Your motion, second.
Is there any comments? We've kind of all had our time to discuss that and so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Hey, Dr. Anderson, all right, thank you very much. Well, before I kind of get into my spiel, I wanted Justin to give you an update. You may have wondered about some things that did appear on the agenda specifically. And so I was just going to ask Justin and give a brief report on, there's just still a lot of changes going on and, and you may wonder about dining hall and some other things. So Justin, thank you very much.
Yep, you're very welcome. Now, Owen Howard Building, we are pretty much at substantial completion. The architects and the owner architect contractor meeting will be next week. We'll have another payout. They still have us, so that's what they'll have to do, to do next month. So you'll see a double in next month. The payment has been done, if you didn't get a chance to drive by there, so the payment is done up front now, so we can actually walk all the way. There's a few little things here and there, a few doors to tweak here and there, a couple of systems to get online for our desk control systems and that sort of thing. But overall, we are nearing, nearing the end. We've got a few more palaces to move out of the Fielding building and up the hill or across the parking lot. As we finish taking that stuff down and we've got some equipment and materials to move out of the back lot so that can be paved. So some of that goes up the hill, some of it goes to scrapyard. And we, we refresh and renew every time we move something around. So that's kind of what's going on with Owen Howard. We did have a camp there, successful camp there that I believe you guys were told about and that went really well. And helped us get a couple of plugs out of a few systems too. The parking lot, they're going to start, you'll start seeing some activity on July 11th on the backside in the areas that we haven't finished paving yet. So there'll be a mark on it, we're going to close down the back south parking lot around the Gator building so we can raise the storm drain reverse speed bumps that are back there. And we're going to take out the circle drive and put in 17 new parking spaces and improve some parking and some flow of traffic back there. That'll all be done before the, the end of the first week of August, I believe, is when their, their deadline is. So for the fair and before we start our classes back in the fall. The cap building, we're still in some design phases with that, we've got to get that team back together in July, which is the Center for Agriculture and Transportation. Center for agriculture and transportation. The fielding renovation, that team were just about ready to uh, let sap design get into construction documents. Um, which will allow us to release that project for bid and that's for the renovation of the precision machine and the. Welding labs into the HVAC and the iron labs and advanced manufacturing. So that's mostly Moec cell funds that are paid for that. Um, along with some of the capital campaign funds. So that'll that'll get that project going. We have some equipment because of COVID and the. Way the grants off felt, we actually have some equipment for that renovation that's in storage. And uh, coinciding with that, we've been we've been dancing. I haven't told you guys yet, but you'll have an expense coming to you guys. Um, the uh, the fire alarm system in the fielding uh, CTC building has died. And it's a it's a proprietary system. You can't just replace the little parts in it. So it's a it's a whole redesign. I've been in talks with the. Um, fire marshal actually all day today, um, trying to see how we can balance that out, but um. It looks like it's gonna be a whole redesign to meet current standards. So um, we've got that ball rolling. So. But that'll coincide with the filling renovations too. So we'll get that all done and we'll be able to hopefully uh, split some of that cost with the uh, with the renovation. As well. Um, the residence hall is um, we've been doing some studies with that. I've got. Numbers back from a cost estimator. They're they're quite high. We've been trying to dig through those numbers and I've sent it to the team. They've kind of been digging to it. I met with the architects last or yesterday, not last week, yesterday. Um, and so they're going to be kind of combing through that and bring it back to this team. Uh, look at Dr. Bates, because he's one of the team members there to help me, Keith. And uh, we're combing through those numbers just to make sure that estimate is appropriate. Um, and it's good and we don't feel like they've doubled up things and that sort of thing. And that can be used uh, with Keith and his team, how to look at the finance and the RFP that you guys approved. For us to get looked at for potential financing for that. We think that finance companies will really want to see that cost estimate, especially in today's environment. Part of the discussion too was that we may need to engage the architects into some of the construction documents to really. Comb out some of those things because the estimators make assumptions we may not want them to make on certain finishes and things like that. So. We'll have some discussion on that uh, to keep that project moving forward. Um, the learning commons, that team is gathering together next month too, and we will be finalizing those designs. So we'll have. Quite a few projects going out to bid very soon, uh, and be bringing to you guys. We'll kind of figure out how the timing of those all layout so that that works best. For the college, but. The Potter Ewing, the HVAC units that you guys approved last month are on order. We're just waiting for them to come out of the factories and you can get those replaced on that. And then the kitchen renovations, we did receive um, just one bid back on that project. Again, it was the same contractor that gave us a previous bid. Um, and it's about eleven thousand dollars more than their first bid. So. Kind of going back to the drawing board with that just a little bit, just to see if there's other options of how we can do that. Um, we've talked as a team whether, you know, maybe it's best instead of trying to add that temporary kitchen and spend that money. Um, maybe the offset is waiting until and doing it next summer, uh, because we still have to do at least part of the. The semester in a temp kitchen, so we wouldn't have fully vicinity yet anyway. So we're exploring some ideas to see if we can maybe come up with. Um, a better proposal to bring back to you guys with that, um, whether we utilizing either that existing bit that we just received. Um, or or some combination. So you'll be here. I want you to know that we got a bid and we're not just ignoring it. Uh, we are trying to see if we can make that work to the best that we can use uh, those dollars the best way to. We had looked at phasing the project before, and again, the campus store is already out of there. So half the space is ready. So maybe it's that we can work out a a phased project, a phased approach to it. Um, it's still safe to polish some money and not have to do a temporary kitchen as well. Those are the the big ones that I had on my list. Um, and then Dr. Anderson asked me to speak just a little bit about our demand response uh, program with Evergy. So uh, in two thousand eighteen, Evergy approached us as a business partner and asked us if we wanted to participate in a program where we would. Um, offload or curtail our power usage during uh, peak times of the summer, basically. Um, usually if it's a ninety plus degree day, I'm waiting for Evergy to give us a call and we can switch over a couple of our buildings. What they have some of their business partners do is actually shut systems down, shut buildings down, shut lights down, HVAC down. We pretty much have something going in every building all year long, uh, except for the holidays. So in the summer, there's there's somebody in every building. We can't really just curtail a whole building, but what we do have the ability to do is we have two buildings that are fully generated. Uh, the Hecker building and the Hopkins building are both fully generated. And so the generators that we have on them are diesel generators. Um, they have. Three to five hundred gallon tanks on. They can run for several days and um, we don't get an opportunity to exercise these. Very often, uh, we don't have a whole lot of power outages around here. Uh, we were pretty fortunate for that. So they don't get, you know, they they run once a week, but they don't actually have a load on, which is. It's not exactly uh, good for them. They need to run with an actual load on. So. Um, their diesel motors like a tractor. So if you ran a tractor all the time, just at idle, it's just not necessarily good for it. So in participating in that, we actually get paid uh, to participate. So in a normal year, we get paid about four thousand dollars. Um, we can switch those on anytime anywhere from three to seven times a year. Um, we have done it twice already this year. Um, in most years, it's completely paid for the fuel plus some plus, like I said, we need to exercise those. This year we will probably break even at the fuel prices that we're at, uh, but we're not losing money. And again, we're exercising our equipment, uh, which is important for those pieces of equipment. Um, the one that operates this building, obviously our data center is here and our backup still our systems are here. So that's why this one is a whole building. And then the Hecker building serves as um, a disaster site for the community. With the uh, the nursing, excuse me, nursing um, ward upstairs. And the Thompson Center real data is a combination. So that one was purchased with some full minute security funds years ago when the building was built. So. Twenty twenty-one was a weird year. We only got a thousand dollars, uh, but we were unable to run the Hopkins one uh, that year. We had bad batteries on that. We're looking for Mark three. Uh, we had bad bad batteries on our data center and uh, we we knew that and we 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 knew that they were slated to repair, right? Or or needed to be replaced. Uh, but you know, with COVID, we ran into issues and we tried to test them once and it failed and we were like, oh, we're not switching that over again because. Cause some crashes and some issues and we want to do that again. So last year was a little little bump in the road, but. Currently, we're under a three year contract. We're in year two of a three year contract. Um, and so far it's been a successful. Again, it helps curtail. Power on the circuit that we're on, um, so that the Evergy doesn't overload your system.
I thought you should know about that because it's happened twice already. We've had hot days and we could have some other warm days throughout the summer and. We're a partner in that whole thing of making sure that our energy grid remains solid and stable. So thank you.
And now that our most of our staff are on laptops, it's actually even less of an interruption than it than it was before. Uh, because we only know that little blip would take their desktop computers down, but their laptops are running on the battery. So they don't even really, they don't even notice that the network sits there. It's on batteries too. So. Um, nobody really notices except for a little flicker in the lights. Any questions?
Just compliments. I heard so many when we were here for the Owen Howard ribbon cutting, just people, you know, were saying, oh, my gosh, this campus is so nice. So. Um, thank you for all that you did because I know that was the a big job.
Yep, trying to get that wrapped up.
Thank you very much. I just kind of want to tell you how I've been spending the last part of my days has been um, kind of cleaning out the office, getting it ready for Dr. Bates. Um, I went with Mary Troyer yesterday to deliver some thank you gifts to some of our foundation partners and donors. And uh, that's really meaningful. You know, my time here at State Fair Community College, while these projects are phenomenal. Because they're benefiting students. It's really the people and the students who have made my time um, so wonderful here. And so to my leadership team, I just say thank you. They've been a great team and to the board, it's been wonderful serving for you. They you didn't, you know, a few of you hired me, but most of you didn't. But thank you for putting your trust in me to lead this great institution and I have. Um, Patty, you get the cattle brand. You know, to Dr. Bates, I do have a presidential pin. One of the great things as president I was able to do, and I hope you'll allow Dr. Bates to do. Was to attend a program called Pasi. It's Presidential Academy Summer Institute. And while I was in Texas, I got to go to a presidential um, museum library, you might imagine where that was, but that president. In nineteen sixty-eight was Lyndon Johnson, and I have a pin that had I've been just saving it for the right purpose, never used it. So. Here's a presidential pin, Dr. Bates, and a note to say congratulations and thank you so much. So that's my report. Just really thank you to the community. Thank you to our faculty and staff and. And it has been wonderful serving all of you. And you know, I can't have any contact, I guess, for thirty days when you retire. But after that, you know. I told Dr. Bates, I sure don't need me, but I would be available if I can be of any service in the future and. For sure, I'll come back to the fun things that go on here because there's so many wonderful opportunities in that fab lab. Man, that sounds like a ton of fun. So maybe I'll have to learn how to operate a remote thing or two. And Patty, you got the cattle brand because of the farm.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I guess everybody would know maybe here what it was.
Well, maybe not. So um, I had done a few custom gifts for the leadership team. They all got one. They did get theirs as ELT meeting this week, but you know, and so I said, because we are getting the farm and who knew that would happen. We may or may not brand the cattle, but you know, we've got the brand to do so. For sure. Well, we thank you for the wonderful nine years that you have given us and um, you know, so many things have happened. My gosh, I mean, it's just quite a list. So. Deep appreciation for everything that you've done for us. So.
Well, the governor did sign the budget.
Thank you, Bobby.
Not just the main thing he cut, just like the main thing he cut out of the budget. I don't know if you recall, it was a first vision in the budget for tax rebates to taxpayers. He. Nixed that. He nixed that. He nixed some, he nixed four nine moved to build new sidewalks in the active school district. So they got earmarked, taken out to them. Too bad. And there was an earmark for a youth film camp somewhere that I guess he didn't like. He took it out. So.
That's good, yeah.
So so it is, we are, so we are good to go.
So then I just have to tell you that by him signing that today, that completes our ten million dollar capital campaign. And I was wanting to give an announcement of that, but I didn't know if the governor had signed that yet. The Moec sales grant really took us over the top for that. So stronger workforce, greater community, and I'll be sure and let Mary Troyer know, but. That's topped us out there. So really compliments to Mary. Um, and uh, and then I did forget, but I, you know, when you're trying to give your final remarks. I just wanted to publicly thank Jo Lynn as well. She's been a phenomenal administrative assistant for me and I really value her and I've missed her this week. Because she's kind of wearing a mask for a reason. She's safe to be here, but um, I I didn't have her the benefit of her skills this week. So, but I muddled along. Thank you, Jo Lynn. There you go, Keith. Sorry for interrupting.
Well, so the no, we talked about the pleasure, we're talking about where it's like we're ending up. So the the management board is a May thirty-one. There's nothing on here that is. Should be particularly surprising. You'll see that our tuition fees are, you know, actually not this far, not that far behind budget. Um, as you know, we were, so we did make up, I'm saying we did the right things to make up that ground. Also, spring semester. Um, was only about little over one percent behind last year. So that helped us out. So um, we did make up ground there on tuition fees. On some of these other things like our state and local grants and contracts, a lot of that comes through the learning force or customized training. And we've added just in June quite a bit of revenue to that. So you'll see that in June report. Those will come up significantly. So that's just a matter of getting things processed. Through through things. Um, same the appropriations for where we thought they would be. As you know, we're rolling over seven hundred thousand of the those two this year. So you could take, you know, basically seven hundred thousand off that twenty twenty-two budget, what's the real budget is. Um, so obviously I've seen this June thirtieth, so I know where June is. So. So I definitely we're 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 gonna be we're gonna be fine there. Um, budget full on budget wise, um. We're gonna be really close to where we thought we'd be. We're only about maybe about two thousand, two hundred thousand off on the line. That two hundred thousand really is. The um, additional funds we use to pay for our, you know, retiring our notes. So overall, we stay within our budget. Thank you. You know, staff does it very, very well. We'll do, we'll see, we'll see that next June. Um, you know, our, as as the FMC continues to raise, you know, rates, um, our other. Unexpected sources of revenue that will next year, that will help us out in that way too. So that's for the question. There's nothing particularly different about about the month budgets. Let you acknowledge you, Dr. Anderson, your last, the last.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, Keith didn't mention it, but our financial reserves are extremely strong. They're probably above that fifty to twenty-five percent range. But you know, you've got some great projects coming on where you can put those to optimal use. Um, so you know, I think the college is in a really strong position. We've got um, people working really hard in enrollment. Uh, declining enrollment is a universal problem among all community colleges and higher ed. And so. You know, we can all talk about the value of higher education to the folks we know and we need to perpetuate that. And you've heard some really exciting things. Happening on our campus for next year that you've approved tonight. And I just thank you for that because. We're all in this together to get the skilled workforce that our community needs and to better the lives of our students and their families. So. All right, thank you. So it looks like it's time for board discussion. Anybody have anything they want to bring forth?
Just a couple of points. Patty and I attended the. Um, Missouri trustees and executive. Well, essentially the presidents and executives of the community colleges uh, conference at the Lake of the Ozarks. A couple of takeaways, mentioning enrollment and the uh. Decline in the number of. Traditional students. Uh, that'll be graduating. From Missouri High Schools in the foregoing future. Will be a challenge for every educational institution in the state of Missouri. And the competition for those students and. Public places a burden on each institution as to how they will fit in. And dealing with the fact that there are just uh. Fewer traditional students. That means either you got to be very good at what you're doing. Or you've got to be able to reach out to those have not been students or increase your non-traditional. Uh, we had noticed the uh. Difficulty in retaining employees, particularly at our more. Wage earning uh, folks. And I guess that we were far from unique in the state of Missouri. Because we, at one session was. About the challenge of uh, filling filling positions and. And ongoing that it's uh, it's just not industry that's having difficulty filling positions, educational institutions are. Are having difficulty and that's a challenge that we're going to continue, continue to face going on. Dr. Bates has asked Patty and I to meet with him in July, the first part of July. Uh, to talk about generating topics for topics for the agenda. At our July board meeting. And I think the intention is that those meetings with. Trustees, one or two trustees ahead of agenda of meetings uh, to make sure that we're. Concerns of trustees are being addressed at at board meetings. So if. Any trustee has a matter that you would like or suggestions of what we need to. Items that need to be brought before the board meeting, if you'd let Patty or myself know. So that we can share those with uh, Dr. Bates. As we uh, uh, work collaboratively, we've already shared with him a couple of ideas of things that. That Patty and I would uh. Patty and I are looking forward to maybe incorporating into our board agendas in in the future. But. So please, please reach out to us if you have. Have any, any suggestions or ideas in that regard.
All right, thank you, Richard. Anybody else?
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else?
Well, we have a meeting after. 5:30 next July 20.
Yeah.
This is July 20. This is what I was going to say to you. So here it comes. You ready? I've appreciated the almost two years that I've been around you. I've known of you and I've heard your name many times, both at home and out in the public. And I will say about 98, 99% of the time, it's good. When you're in a position to have to make tough decisions, that's, that's hard to do. So I want to express my appreciation. And I think that it would only be duly appropriate, since we're not going to raise our glass to us, we should stand, give you an ovation.
I think there are some beverages out there. Things I want to mention is that, of course, you know, I am a member of the Missouri Cowboys Association. And yes, in this month's magazine, it's Brad Driscoll. And so it's talking about generational, trying to to get the new genera, the younger generation involved. And so he was asked to, you know, make a few quotes. And of course, he's talking about State Fair Community College. So I'm going to leave these magazines here in the office if anybody wants to read them. He's a member, so he probably already has that magazine. He may not just have read it yet. But anyway, you know, kudos to him. And we have so many things, opportunities for the ag program that that certainly he'll be a part of. The other thing is, I saw on Facebook something about Daniel. And so I'm like, oh, my gosh. And so, Daniel, I want you to share what this opportunity is for you, because others may not have seen it. So.
Yeah, so I was selected for the Stand to Veteran Leadership Program to the George W. Bush Institute. So it's a, I'm 1 in 50 selected nationwide. I'm the only person from Missouri representing Missouri in the group. We had our first module back in Dallas two weeks ago. Amazing people in there. Talking about CEOs, executive directors from these amazing nonprofits, military generals and colonels. So being in that room with that space to be with network has been amazing. So it was, it's hard to get into the program. It's application, interview, social media sweep that they have to do of everything, working with the Bush Institute. Bush's staff has to interview you through the Bush Center. And then I was selected. I didn't expect to be selected, but I was. And so I'm happy to be a part of that, representing State Fair at the national level and also Pence County as well, because I'm the only one from Missouri representing. I made a lot of connections already. For example, there's a Marine there also. I was in the Marines as well. He's a director of cybersecurity for all of Microsoft. He's very offered to help out with the college and stuff. So just making connections on that level nationally. But it's an amazing program. Looking forward to the month, which is going to be in mid-July in Dallas. But the whole purpose is there's a project I have to work on with the Bush Center's guidance. And then I have to give that presentation in October to President Bush and his and his and his team at the Bush Center. So I'm looking forward to it. Nervous at the same time, but I feel like I can accomplish that. But my goal is to focus on higher education, veterans, military, and the workforce. So what you're doing, a lot of that good work here with the learning force and Mike's area. So that's going to be my, kind of my goal, working with the Bush Center moving forward. So, yeah, but happy to represent the college at that level. It's an amazing honor to to be selected. So so, yeah, that's what the program's all about. So, you know.
What's ahead for you? That's awesome. So I'm sure there are others I heard. Let's see, Rachel, you're in charge of, something you're telling me down at, what are you now in charge of?
Yeah, I'm the chair of the Chief Human Resources Organization for MCCAs. So my job this year. So we had a really great conversation, some of what Richard already talked about, you know, addressing staffing challenges, the things that everybody's dealing with. So staffing challenges, remote work was a big conversation, because we kind of were the trailblazers in that. And so it was, it was good. A good opportunity. I'm looking forward to the next year there.
Congratulations. So well, thank you. And so, yeah, just some, gosh, I know many of you probably have other things that are happening. So just be sure and let us know, so we can make sure that others know about it as well. So anything else for board discussion? If not, as mentioned, our next board meeting will be July 28 at 5:30, right here in the boardroom. And so before we adjourn our meeting, there is, because of Dr. Anderson, Jo Lynn has has worked to have just a little bit of social time, so that we can visit and thank Joanna for, you know, for the impact that she has made in our community and for the students. And and we just need that time to say thanks. So one more time, she'll just have to work till midnight. I guess a little bit of a snack.
And your gift on the table is, because I was cleaning out my office. Some of you may or may not have gotten this. They were produced for a jingle on the green by our CNC machining program. And so if you didn't have one now, you do, or you have two. But anyway, they're really cool. And you can hang that on your tree when Christmas comes or put it up somewhere.
So I think you've got it set up right outside, open your, your outside the door. So so we will adjourn our meeting. But please, I take the opportunity to say, and I know, well, no, probably you won't see it tomorrow. So you do know you won't. All right, y'all would make a say aye. Job well done, Dr. Anderson.